I'm going to open the September sixth, two thousand twenty-three select board meeting, call it to order. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. So we do not have a forum. We have four members of the select board right now. One select board member just came home from the hospital this afternoon. And I don't know where our other select board member is. I apologize. We've all come prepared unless he comes in shortly, we can hold business for informational purposes only, but we can't take any vote, binding vote at this time. So I'm going to table the approval of the minutes of August sixteenth. We had comments from the community. From someone from the US Small Business Administration, but I do not see her either. And we have with us Paul McGrath. From Gulf Road. Do you want to wait and speak to the full board when we have come, when we can make any kind of decision or want to comment anyway?
I guess the part of me is to find out whether the road study is done. You know, they came back with some things also. Some of the signs that we exactly put up have been taken back down. And so I just kind of want to figure out where things are at based on, you know, this is kind of a year in the making of, you know, between the whole first posting, you know, the dynamic, lots of short, the dynamic of Gulf Road changes. So when between the bridge posting and talking about lowering the speed limit, et cetera, that are all pushed back waiting for the roadside, which was done in June. And so I hadn't heard any impacts. That's why we scouted a couple of times and then that's when I heard it. So we'll talk select board even though, so I guess I don't know what information I have the road study. But kind of where we're at based on that.
We did a traffic count study.
Yep.
Three places on Gulf Road.
Yep.
From June fifth to June twelfth. And that was going to just kind of let us know how the traffic was traveling on that road. And that, that is how, that's the basis for setting the speed limit. But I'm going to ask Kurt to speak somewhat on this because you kind of were handling this more than I was. So I don't know about this, the signs and so forth.
Yeah, sure. It's really difficult for me to hear Paul. Is there any chance we can get a microphone closer to him?
Well, if you can come over here by this, if you see this microphone.
So I, I can give you some, some background. This has been a concern for well over a year, if not more at this point. We did request a roads or a traffic study. And there also was a request to try to slow down the traffic as they're coming up to the bridge on Gulf Road. Now this happened at a time, unfortunately, when the state decided to shut down their sign making shop. And so with some sense of urgency, I went out to the commercial market and got signs that we did put up and post. And it was brought to our attention once we put those up by, by others that the signs were not compliant. In other words, they were not compliant to the, the federal regulations for road signs. And this was because we wanted to get something up quickly. And just as quick, we needed to take them down because the complaint was correct. The complaint was correct. These are not official signs. And so they did come down. We, we did do the road study. The traffic study rather, and the result of that did indicate that the eighty-five percentile speed limit or, or traffic flow was on average at forty-two, forty-three miles an hour, something like that. Much slower on Route fifteen side, but on the North Wilkup roadside. Both points were showing over forty miles per hour at which were in the eighty-five percentile. Now, according to the state regulations in changing speed limits. They first require that this kind of a study take place and then they set a benchmark at the eighty-five percentile. And this is based on national standards. So the request is, as I understand it, to reduce the speed to twenty-five miles an hour. And I did spend time with Paul. I have visited over there a few times. And Paul is absolutely correct and people are flying down that road. They are definitely speeding. But the question comes up as to what does the town have authority to do to change it to a twenty-five mile an hour limit? We would, it would be a random decision. And we have been cautioned by law enforcement that those kinds of changes are very, very difficult to enforce. There's a classic case of this in Hyde Park where the residents put on a lot of pressure on the town to change it to twenty-five. And it, it's simply just not enforced there as a result. So I think that the issue here we have is that Paul is correct. I mean, yet people fly down that road as they do in the Pond Road and, and other roads in town. But I don't know that the solution can be a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. I think, so the issue at hand is speeding, not, not really the, the the signage as so much as it is for speeding. There are some schools that would say that putting up a twenty-five mile an hour sign will do nothing. Others say it's worth a try, but I believe under the state regulations. It probably, it is, it is not, in my opinion, an option for the town. So that kind of puts us to what do we do about speeding, whether it's on Gulf Road or elsewhere? And my personal suggestion is, is that we use cautionary signs. And not make the mistake of buying them commercially this time and getting signs that do fall under the federal regulation. And we can put as many of those up as we want to. And that would be my personal recommendation.
What do you mean by caution signs?
Yellow sign. Like the recommended twenty-five mile an hour that are on the, I guess it's the south side of the road on the curves. Is that what you're talking about?
That's an advisory sign. A cautionary is the big diamond. There's actually only a few different ways in the M U T C D that you can enhance a cautionary on a bridge like what you have. Some of those will be putting signage further out. You don't really have the option on North Wilkup roadside to do that because you need so much ground line. For those to be effective.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Mike Perry.
Okay.
Just a guest here. I don't know anything.
Okay, I didn't know who you are.
I used to work in road construction and I had kind of assigned.
Gotcha.
Then coming from the Gulf, from the fifteen side, you could do a few additional signs or add some that have higher reflectivity or lighted or things like that. But there's, there's actually pretty narrow guidelines on how you can increase cautionary signs for road hazards.
Right. The bottom line is, you know, a year ago, we, you know, we met about bridge and about the posting and about the weight limits and all that good stuff. And so not that there weren't trucks running illegally over it before the posting was rescinded, but now based on their road study, if you look at the average of the three different spots, it all comes down pretty much the same. There's over three hundred cars a day that go down that road. I mean, there's six of us that live on that road, six or eight houses on that road. Sixty-eight of which are trucks. And this is just based off of the, the road study that, you know.
That was done this morning, yeah.
And so trucks aren't necessarily, I mean, some of them do fly, but the trucks aren't necessarily the speeding culprits. It's commuters, bottom line. It's, it's people on, there's UTVs, there are, I mean, anything you can name flies up and down that road. Every road sign that is on that road, or let's say ninety-nine percent of them are riddled with bullet holes. And whether that was done ten minutes ago or ten years ago. The road is just, it's one of those roads where it's a cutoff. The town has now changed the dynamic by, and I had found some things back and, and I guess part of it is this has been visited and I found it in, in old select board minutes. This has been visited several times and some of the people that, you know, are on this board were involved with it back then. And so or in this room generally in these meetings, were on the board back then. And so what's happened is the whole dynamic of that road has changed. You're not talking about, you know, every other, you know, every second select board minutes that you look at is talking about trying to limit track to trailers on North Wilkup Road. Because of the infrastructure damage that they're doing to the road. And us as taxpayers, for us as a town, don't have the money to do that, to fix it. And that whole conversation, that's a whole nother conversation. But in doing that, in having that conversation on North Wilkup Road, which is a full two-lane center striped road. We're trying to limit it on that, yet we just expanded the scope of what is allowed on Gulf Road as a crossroad. And that road on every single corner is at best a lane and a half. And so now we have not full blown track to trailers all the time. But you've got seventy, eighty thousand pound dump trucks with trailers running back and forth. When gravel runs their trucks, they run them two or three at a time and they run back and forth. And so what that does is it adds to the dynamic. You're never going to stop all the speeders. But when eighty-five percent of the people are doing forty-three miles an hour right off of the bridge, literally hundred fifty, two hundred feet off that bridge, which I just drove over it just that I'd never looked at my speed, my speedometer going over the bridge. At nineteen, twenty miles an hour, you're like, okay, this is a comfortable speed if you can see, right? So in a hundred and fifty feet, they're accelerating to forty-five miles an hour. There are, by the math, there are forty-five cars a day that are doing forty-five to sixty miles an hour down that road. Someone's going to get killed. And part of that is because now with the amount of trucks on the road, because of what we've changed, that has totally changed the dynamic. I walk or bike down that road every day. And there are people with walkers that walk down the road, people walking their dogs. There was a bike race that ran through there this weekend. Every day I walked down there, three or four people got to lock up their brakes, swerve out of the way because they come around the corner at forty miles an hour down by the dump. It's just dangerous. And so I don't know what the answer is. I think there is. I disagree a little bit because I looked at the Vermont backroads when you originally sent it to me, Kurt. I looked at that Vermont backroads. And, and honestly, the town wasn't going to do the road study until I basically said, one, I'm going to pay for it. If LCPC doesn't, because it says right in here they will. And I've talked to them. And so I think there is a road study has to be done, which a traffic study has been started. But if you look at, you know, people talked about sightlines. I went, I took pictures this morning because when I walked out, it's actually the first time I realized that the signs were gone on the bridge. There is no yield sign. There's no anything sign. It just says one lane bridge, but one of them, which you can see on the US both, I'll look first. You can't even see it. It's behind a bush. That's coming from North Wilkup Road to the bridge. You can't even see the one lane bridge sign. It's a question of truing back a bush.
That is a problem.
But with, with, you know, the different seasons it brings on in the winter because no leaves, you can see straight through from almost North Wilkup Road to Mel Stoddard's hay barn, right? Right now, you can't even see the other end. There's a car, this is coming from the same side. There's a car in that picture. You can't even see him on the other side of the bridge. I know it's black and white, but that car isn't even at my driveway yet. And so you can't see either end of the bridge or approaching cars coming either way. And the minute I've sat there and, you know, I work from home, I work on our land a lot, so I'm around a lot, obviously. And so literally I've seen gravel's trucks go through there when they are running. And when the puddle is sitting in front of, on the North Wilkup side of the bridge, it's a big puddle that forms right there. Literally they're coming through fast enough, water is coming over the front of their truck. That's no exaggeration. And so you got a truck coming through there and they're hitting fourth or fifth gear by the time they hit that straightaway. That's forty miles an hour all day long in an eighty thousand pound rig. You get some goofball kid coming around the corner from the other end doing the same, someone's going to get killed. You can't police for everything, but the sheriffs don't do anything. They're never around. And it's, you know, I don't know what they do for the two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand bucks we pay them because they're never around. I'd never see them on North Wilkup Road, Gulf Road. And I basically, I leave my house and I go there, Elmore Pond Road. Elmore Pond's just as dangerous, but at least most of that is straight road. Where you've got a line of sight. Gulf Road, there's no line of sight. And so the numbers are basically the same from the bridge to Mel Stoddard's house. And then when you get into the curves, yeah, people slow down because if you don't, you're going to end up in the drink. And so but even at, if someone's running at thirty-five miles an hour on those corners down between Mel's and Route fifteen. Honestly, that's where I've almost got hit, umpteen times. There's a blind spot coming off the bridge. There's a blind spot coming right by Mel Stoddard's barn in between my place and Whitetail Drive. You get to Mel's and from there all the way down, it's blind spots galore and it's a lane and a half wide. So I don't know what the answer is, but as a town, we changed the dynamic of the road a year ago. And I still question the, the legitimacy of that because it has been talked about in two thousand sixteen several times at this board. And so that being said, the dynamic of that road was changed a year ago and it is now way more dangerous. And so, you know, it's, it's not just myself. There, there is, you know, I just talked, they're hanging. I talked to the Stoddards. They're of the same mindset. There's, it's a Blaisdell, the guy right up around the corner from me, him and his wife walked down through there, the guy up in the yellow house, they all walked through there. And it's something where with gravel biking now becoming more of a thing than mountain biking, it is a tour of gravel bikes every weekend. Someone's going to get killed. And, and obviously you don't want to see that, but it's something where what can we do to make that road safe? I mean, you know, with the road study, you can, the town, if the town passes an ordinance, you can lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. And is that going to fix everything? No, but I think it'll, it'll open people's eyes if there's decent signage, if there's yield signs on the bridge. I mean, it hasn't, you know, and, and I understand what you're saying about trying to get the signs and you've been helpful with it. But it's something where, you know, we put up no parking signs on poorly road at the rail trail because people complained about people parking on that road, I'm guessing. And there was no road study done. Those, those signs aren't legal either because there was no study.
That was done by V Trans and Vermont State Government. Those are not our signs.
You know, but we, we put those signs up or we, whoever it is, put signs up on a road that gets very little traffic and people can't park on the side of the road where you can see for a mile. Yet on this back road that is the dump, it's now a cutoff because we can't police or control the amount of track trailer traffic on North Wilkup, which you guys all know about, you talk about it. You know, with Crasberry and all that. At what point do you, you know, we have to do something.
Yeah. I mean, one thing.
All the roads in, in Wilkup. It's not just your road. It's my road. My road is just as bad. I mean.
Does that make it right?
No, it doesn't, but it's.
I mean, think about Maury Hill Road. Try, think about the people that go speed up to Maury Hill Road and the other one.
Lowering the traffic to twenty-five miles an hour, I don't believe is going to stop them from speeding.
There's a code in handbook that says unreasonably lowering the speed limits generates more speeders and a general disrespect for speed limits as they are anyway.
I read, I, I read all that, but if, if you, if there is a yield sign on the bridge.
Well, you can't put a yield sign.
Wait, this knows a thing really from the public. He has to go through me. That's right. Or you can ask me or something.
So anyways, I don't know what the answer is. I, it's something where you either there are options are, you limit the traffic somehow, some way on the road, which.
Office she needed opening. And I don't think, can't without a counter.
But we've opened up traffic on that road off of, to make a solution off of another road that we're trying to limit. It just doesn't make sense. We, we opened up, so when the whole truck and not to rehash that whole side of it, but when the whole truck posting of that was set up in two thousand twelve, it was done by the road foreman and the select board. Then in two thousand sixteen, gravel, gravel incorporated as Lamoah Valley aggregates at the Reed Pit on a road that was exempt from trucks. And you couldn't get an overweight permit. And it was a six-ton road. They opened up that pit. Kim Gravel was on the select board. There is a meeting, there is minutes in here.
I know.
But it just, let me finish because there are minutes in here that we have taken a road that was exempt to trucks. That would eliminate a huge part of this safety issue. For me, it's not just about the speed. It's the safety of that road and the dynamic of that road. And in two thousand sixteen, gravel slash Lamoah Valley aggregates opened up that pit on an illegal road. And Kim Gravel, a week later, it's right here in the minutes. And when we said we couldn't find anything in the minutes when everything was changed, it's right here in the minutes. Kim Gravel sent an email to the board that isn't listed in here, but basically questioning it. The board continued to keep the road posted with her on that board. Five months later, Belinda brought it up because the road was in shambles. And it was discussed again on the board. It's right in the minutes. And the board continued to keep the road posted at six tons, no trucks. Probably for safety in infrastructure, protecting the road and protecting the safety. Six years later, you guys have changed the dynamic of that road because there wasn't sufficient evidence or minutes or whatever. There's three, there's two. There's three, there's two to three sets of minutes from select board meetings. We are continuing the posting of that road. So however it's done. And honestly, we should look at a lot of our roads, because you're right. People drive like idiots around here, and it's not just my road. However. My road to Elmore Pond Road is a cutoff. And it's a cutoff from an illegal tractor trailer road. But what we've done is open it up to allow all these trucks. Which just exacerbates the dynamic of safety. Because there's not a better answer. That's not the right way, in my mind.
First of all, any select board can undo what a previous.
That's fine, but it's.
That's one thing. The other thing is.
But it was undone because, it was undone because there wasn't sufficient evidence or that it was done correctly. And it was, it's in various minutes.
Also, because the, and because Fort Hill Bridge. Was taken out. And there's not a safe way for trucks to get up and out of the North Wilkett Road. I've been standing on the side of the entrance to fifteen and North Wilkett Road. And trucks coming from the village trying to come up through are in the other lane. As cars are coming down. Once that bridge, the board decided to remove that bridge because that's how the trucks used to go.
Those trucks aren't supposed to be on North Wilkett Road. Bottom line, they're not supposed to be on North Wilkett Road.
Well, they can be with an overweight permit.
Okay, so is, so now.
They have an.
So because you gotta, you.
You can't ever say you can't have anything. While we feed on the, the bridge, but you can't ever say, that I'm aware of. Say you can't, a truck can't go on a road.
You absolutely can.
No, you have to let delivery trucks go through and all that stuff too. You just can't stop oil, you can't stop.
Seventy thousand pound dump trucks with beaver tail excavator trailers on the back of them going down a back road. Because it's a cutoff and it's a lane and a half wide.
Okay, so we're not getting anywhere. We've had this conversation. It's not enough people here to make a decision tonight, and I apologize a lot. Cause I'm embarrassed about. But I wanted to make it on the agenda for next meeting.
Which is one.
Every two, it's the first and third Wednesdays of the month.
I should be able to be here, but.
You can always attend Zoom. If you want.
Yeah, no, it, I'm leaving, I'm going on a fundraising trip to. So, long story short, I'm not gonna be at a place. So let me figure out if I'm going to be here. And I'll let you know, be email.
If not, we'll put you on the next agenda.
And it, it was more to find out where we ended up, based on the traffic study, what. And I know you can't vote on anything, but what are the recommendations from the board? Whether it's this road or other roads to help make this road in particular, but if there's other roads that need it too. To help with safety. We can't rely on the sheriff's department. They're never around. It's that simple. So are there other recommendations that the board has? Or Kurt, that you have as town manager, et cetera, that, what administrator, whatever, you know, what are the recommendations?
Well, yeah, my personal recommendation is to go with cautionary signs that are. Comply with the federal rules. My, another concern that I just pass along to the board is. Once we put in a twenty-five mile an hour zone anywhere in town. It won't be twenty-four hours before you're gonna have to do it on the pond road. Um, I mean, every, it'll just, the town will become a twenty-five mile an hour town. Um, and that's, that's really discouraged by the rules of the road as I understand it. But you do one road, you're doing them all. The phone will ring within minutes.
But honestly, what does that hurt? What, what does it hurt? It hurts, I, I mean. So, I'll leave it at that.
I think it's the thing of, it goes back to the suggestion of, if you go two in one. If you go too forward in one direction, people just disobey every speed sign you put up. Frank, that's the thinking on it.
People that are gonna disobey it are gonna disobey it regardless. I understand that. Problem now is the different type of, and, and it's the last time I'll say it. The different type of traffic that is on these back roads. On most of these back roads, you don't have a steady stream of fifty to seventy-five. Seventy to eighty thousand pound rigs running up and down these roads. This road you do. And that's the difference. So, I don't know how you, how you fix that if you can't do it with the speed signs and or eliminating the trucks. But I'm all, I'm all for suggestions.
Hi, this is Monica. Can I say something? We have that speed limit, that speed sign on Town Hill Road. And we're mighty used to it by now anyway, but I do remember. That the sheriff's department said that they could put like a camera or something on it. I'm wondering if that speed sign could somehow be utilized in helping with this problem. Like move it over to the Gulf Road.
They'd love to move it, but it's cemented in.
No.
It was never put, it's in a horrible place. I don't, I don't know who thought to put it there.
Darn it. Okay.
And the other one that we had, a motorist ran over and trashed and we found parts of it, I think in Grassbury.
What's that cost?
They were a grant from the sheriff's department, that's all.
A grand or a grant?
There's actually several really good studies that say that having a radar speed sign next co-located. It's state law, you have to co-locate them, they have to be together. There are a lot of really good studies to show how effective those are. There will occasionally be the kid that tries to get high score and think that's gonna fix your problem. However. The general person who's doing the forty-three miles an hour, might see that thirty-five blinking at them and will probably slow down.
It's human nature, and that's, and that's.
I do.
It's, and whether way the you're speeding or not, you see the light blink and you're like, it's, you know, you're like. I, I just think that it's, and you look at, so they grade that road. The, the road department does a great job, right? And they grade that road constantly. And the two probably worst areas outside of climbing the hill off of fifteen by gravel's pit. Are the washboard by Whitetail Drive and the washboard on my straightaway. And it's accelerating and decelerating off of that bridge and around that corner. And if somehow you can keep people from coming across the bridge at thirty-five, which it's legal to do. They won't hit fifty by the straightaway. And so if you can either slow them down at the bridge, coming to the bridge, whatever it is. Those signs do work. And I'd be willing to invest in it. I'd be willing to, no different than the road study. It's something where I feel strongly about it. I'd be willing to offset it for the town, because I know the town didn't even wanna spend for the road study. So I'd be willing to put in for a sign or one of those things if it's, you know, just.
Well, at this point, I would be open to you investigating the cost of those, a couple of them. What, what it would cost the town, if you could bring that to us. To purchase that.
Your town doesn't.
We'll go from there. I'm not making any promises, but, you know.
Okay. All right. Well, let's, I guess. Let's figure out if the twentieth works, and then we'll revisit it then. Guys get to your other business. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know what local control commission is.
There was an application for a regional. That the state had approved for the operation.
For cannabis? Um, I don't have it.
Sounds like maybe a next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to wait. Can't believe there's one person here from the school street users. That could up their monthly water rent. But we'll have to bypass that. Kurt, do you wanna give you a project manager's report?
Yeah, I can. Um, so I think hopefully you have a copy there.
Yeah.
But most of the focus under this past couple of weeks has been around. Getting the data together for insurance, flood recovery primarily. Um, I do wanna just mention, if you might all be aware that. Uh, our one-ton truck was stolen last night. And it was a result of a police chase on the Pond Road. Uh, where the suspect dumped the truck he had stolen on McKernie Road. Went down to the woods and got into the town one-ton truck and stole it. And that was reported to the sheriff's department this morning. Um, the subsequent to that, Dylan and Joey were going to pick up. Uh, their plow truck from repair. And we're in Cambridge and lo and behold, they passed the Wilkett truck. Uh, the stolen truck. And the, the stolen truck had its logo spray painted off of it. And following the stolen truck were two patrol cars. Their. Lights were not on, but they were following very, very closely. One was state police and one was the sheriff. And at this point, we're waiting, I, I assume this person has been arrested and I assume our truck is somewhere. Um, with the sheriff and just wanted to give everybody an update on that one. Little shocking. Second is garage mold clearing. We're scheduled for next Thursday to have. Safe serve to come in and to do the stripping of the walls to put up water vapor. And to chemically spray for black mold, which is very pervasive in there. And also, we have started the order for a new overhead door that was damaged in the flood. And that has started to be in motion. I don't know where the. Uh, application stands at this point. I know Linda was signing it. I don't know if it's been.
Application and exempt, tax exemption certificate have been emailed. And we have the orders that we're signing with the fifty percent deposit, which will be mailed. And a deer too.
Okay. Okay. Um, had a very interesting visit today at the MSI facility on Route fifteen. Uh, more or less, this was just a long shot of what are all of our options, what are possible options? Um, for relocating the garage and relocating the fire department out of the flood zone. The facility that MSI has is twelve thousand square feet. Um, it is a modern building. It is very well equipped. Uh, infrastructure is, is good and solid. Um, it is a cement floor structure. Uh, very high ceilings, um, heating and so forth are all in place. Um, and if, I would encourage the board to consider taking a look at this. It is up for lease or for sale. Um, but as far as a turnkey garage and fire department. I don't think, I, I was really surprised that it, it fits to a T. Um, there would need to be a little bit of, uh, build out because of the doors. Uh, these are dock doors, they would have to be changed to overhead doors, but other than that, it is, uh. It is perfect, really. It's just a one great big wide open space there. They do have a bit of a water problem. And, uh, you know, there are, there's a solution with a spring that might be overhead. Uh, but that was the negative that I saw. So, um, you know, depending on your thoughts, if this is. Worth taking a look at, I personally think that it is. Been working on, changing subjects here. I've been working on a municipal insurance claims. Uh, trying to correspond with our BLCT insurer. Um, as I've mentioned before, the assessor has. Uh, come at one time only. Um, I've been corresponding and Deb has been doing a lot of research, but I've been corresponding with. Our VLCT rep. Um, as mentioned before, there's a five million dollar cap on this for the entire state of Vermont. Um, and it's kind of difficult now to understand exactly. How we, uh, position a claim. But we're gonna continue to do it just as you would normally. Um, they are asking a few questions. Um, we're able to respond to those questions, um, but it's really unclear. Really what, what the other side of this is gonna look like. Um, I don't, at this point, I don't think we have to escalate it within VLCT. But we do have a deadline with FEMA. So whatever is not covered by VLCT. Is potentially can be covered by FEMA. But there's a, there is a time constraint and one event has to happen before the other can. And so, um, any too much delay, uh, from VLCT is, will be a problem. So we may have to put a little bit more pressure on them going forward. Um, FEMA documentation, we're meeting with FEMA again tomorrow. Um, we have put together all of our, our damage inventory with, with GPS locations. We have all the photographs for them. Um, the latest request from FEMA was to assign a cost to each one of those damaged line items. Um, and I am in the process of trying to do that. Um, I can't say that we have all of our invoices in as of yet. Uh, but we'll be discussing that with FEMA tomorrow. Uh, next is the port-alet. I just wanna mention that I. Indicated at our last meeting that the port-alet was going to be canceled. But I decided just to hold off. Um, because of the, um, barbecue event. I thought it would be good to have that there for the barbecue event, and then it'll, it'll go away. Um, nine-one-one signs have been picked up, over nine hundred of them, I believe. And along with the mounting posts. And hardware has also been ordered, and I believe it was, hardware was picked up today. So we're in a position.
So let you know, I have not ordered all of them yet. He wanted me to do them in batches, so they're not nine hundred yet. Just so you know that.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I guess the order said nine hundred, then. Maybe, I don't know. I didn't count them. So at any rate, we're in a position right now where, um, the project can get started. Um, Deb has, uh, indicated that she would take the lead on. Um, placement of the signs, in other words, making sure we got the right signs with the right houses. Uh, in the right location. Um, and Bob will be installing the signs. Um, I think Deb is thinking about starting with a small road. Um, and kind of seeing how it goes, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna learn as we go, which is, which is usually the, always the case. Um, wanna do it on one of the easier roads to manage. As far as road maintenance goes, um, we've kind of changed our operating procedure with the road crew. Um, they are, uh, after a heart-to-heart meeting where we are, um. Reporting daily on what's being done and where it's being. Reporting daily on what's being done and where it's being done. And I intend to forward all of that to the board on a daily basis. Citizen complaint log, to date, we have. Citizen complaints, which are like ninety-nine percent roads, road issues. Had been through my own. Desire to to. Keep it moving and not have delays for for citizens. Those started to come to my home phone number. And that grew into a situation where. There simply was just referral to my home phone number. And so what I'd like to propose or have the board speak to the town clerk. And use a log instead. So the calls are logged. This is using Google Docs, so it's a shareable document. Anybody can look at it at any time. And it would be our the road crew's responsibility to look at those and to respond to those. Rather than having them come to me directly. We did get the. An extension for our road segment projects. Our road segment this year is primarily Keeler Pond. And V Trans did extend it for a year, a little over a year, I believe. And that really took a lot of pressure off the road crew. But Dylan is still convinced that he will have Keeler Pond done this year. But it would be towards the end of October rather than the end of September. So that was really good news coming with that extension. I will note that to get that extension, there's some paperwork that needs to be done that I'll be filing along with Dylan. Back with the state. Basically, what you're doing is acknowledging that you are taking the extension. Brush hogging, need to get ahold of. Our. Maintenance crew and kickoff brush hogging. At the transfer station. And I wanted to ask Linda, in your history, is this about the time of year when that's usually done?
Right. Who's our maintenance crew?
It's Isaac. Isaac, who does all of our. Also wanted to make a suggestion of transfer station management. Transfer station management has really been split between the board and and the town clerk. But I wanted to make the recommendation that it be under the treasurer's purview. It is a business. One where the relationship with the attendant is strong. And I think it would. Not having the transfer station be partially driven by the board, partially driven by the town clerk. Partially driven by the administrator. I would propose that. That become a focused management. Issues, position. And same with website posting. Website posting, these will be posts of agendas and minutes and so forth and so on. Is another area where multiple, multiple users are coming in modifying. Posting, deposting, and that's a formula that's just simply broken. And so I'd like to propose that we find a way, could either be the administrator or it could be the clerk. That is the single user of website posting. And that's what I got so far.
Yes, thank you. We had our bids for our town hall. Heat and water, which we'll have to put off. And we also have to accept our engineering bids. And I think he's starting on Friday. And I'm gonna propose that we have a. A quick meeting. At some point so that we can. Get these resolved. Do you have a special time that is good for you, Alan? That you could have a special meeting, like even if we do it Zoom? When do you get home at night sometime? What time do you get home?
Five o'clock is safe, right?
Why don't I call. Richard and find out. How he's feeling and if he couldn't. Have a fifteen-minute meetings because those two things we need to. Deal with.
You know, he's worst-case call by phone.
Right. So Kurt has officially submitted his resignation from the select board. So we will. Post that on the board and on the website for ten days. And at our next meeting on the twentieth, we will. Hear from candidates who are interested. I have Michael Parity here tonight. Do you want to talk or wait? All right, so Michael is interested in filling that spot. I wanted to let everyone know it's official and. It's public now that the Woke Community Forest was awarded. Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the US Forest Service. To purchase our final lot, so we'll be moving forward. Could that probably January? I think January is as soon as we could close on that. That's exciting. It was very competitive this year. And the last thing is just about the barbecue. It sounds like it's gonna rain. As every year. But I was thinking. Of not canceling it, it's just too hard with the food. That if it is raining, that we would. Put tables around the outside here. We can have some tables in here for people to eat. If it's not pouring, they still could eat under the gazebo. A library is still open. It'll kind of put a little damper on things, but. I would say we just move forward. If that's all right. You have anything else? This will have a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, six fifty-three. And I will shoot you an email about, we really need to deal with horns. Because they have to order that and there's no heat at the town hall, the valet.